Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this January eighteenth, 2022, meeting of the Gallatin City Council. It is six P. M. And time to begin our meeting. We're going to begin the meeting like we do each meeting with the indication, the pledge of allegiance this evening. Councilman Alexander is going to pray for us, and Councilman Overton is going to lead us in the pledge. You'll stand with me, please.
Let it go hard pray. Turn grace God once again. We come with Thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you, dear Lord, for the city of Gallatin. Reproach God that I be in the midst of this meeting tonight, and let everything we say and do be pleasing to your sight. In Jesus' name we do pray in every heart set. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Ketchrell, if you would call the role for us this evening, please. Vice Mayor Feneau.
Here.
Councilman Alexander.
Here.
Councilman Fannin.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
And Councilman Overton.
Here.
There we have a quorum. Thank you very much, and thank you all for being here this evening. You have the minutes from the November sixteenth, 2021, City Council meeting and the December seventh, 2021.
Most approve both.
Second, a motion to approve by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor of approving both sets of minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The minutes are approved. We will now go to public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting where anyone who's here with us tonight can address anything that's on the agenda. We ask that you come forward, introduce yourself, give us your address, then you'll have five minutes to speak. There is also a period of time at the end of the meeting where you can speak to anything that's not on the evening's agenda. So with that, public recognition on agenda-related items is open.
Good evening, council. My name's Michelle Juvans, and I live at thirteen thirty-five Long Hollow Pike. I have a, my husband Pascal was not able to be here tonight, so he gave me something to read for you all to consider regarding agenda item number one, which is regarding the apartments off Harris Lane and Greenlee. So he says, last week, the city planner gave you all the 2021 TDOT traffic count, and if you took time to read it, to study it, you probably realized it shows that all the main arteries of our city are at or near max capacity. We're talking about Long Hollow Pike, Broadway, Main Street, Red River Road, Nashville Pike, SR one oh nine. So the infrastructure is already maxed out on these roads. And you are voting to add more apartments, more cars, more traffic, meaning saturating the capacity even more. I know every time we bring this issue to the council, we are told there is no problem. The traffic will get better. We have even heard one of you telling us that traffic is good because it brings opportunities. It is good if you don't have to commute. Now, let's get back to the development. Harris Lane has nothing on the, there's no traffic study on that traffic count that you were given. So part, I'm sorry about this. I'm reading on a tiny little phone here. It's kind of hard to like scroll back and forth. So, so basically, it says here, so we have a reduced capacity, and we'll be adding two hundred and fifty or more apartments, meaning at least five hundred more cars. And on top of that, we'll have all the traffic brought by the commercial zone, all that dumping onto a two-way lane that cannot clearly absorb this kind of traffic. More, having more shops, more restaurants is great, and it would, and we desperately need more jobs. Our city needs more jobs. You promised us more jobs, but again, you're trying to cut down on this opportunity by prioritizing apartments over commercial. Our Director of Economic Development, Mr. Fenton, told you that we need less rooftops and more commercial space. Why don't you listen to him? Of course, people can develop their land the way they want, so let them do it with the actual zoning in place, which would mean more commercial space, more jobs, and less apartments. I would like to remind you that before the last elections, we heard you saying you will not approve more apartments. You gave us your word, or was that just an empty promise? The developer tells us they are doing this for the good of the community. We have heard that before. They want apartments because they know there's little risk, and they will bring, it will bring them a lot of money, enough money to get their investment back in just around eighteen months. This will not be the case for the commercial part. So if they really want to do what is best for our community, let's keep the current zoning and have them bring more business and more jobs. So please show us your word actually means something and is not just another empty campaign promise, and vote no on the rezoning to stop building all these apartments. We need more jobs, not more beds. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on agenda-related items this evening? Seeing no one, I'll declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed. I want the people going off. Moving on now to mayor's comments. I again want to recognize all the folks that helped us navigate the bad weather the last couple of weeks. I mentioned last week during our work session, our Public Works Department knocked it out of the park with taking care of the roads, taking care of our trash, and then taking care of keeping all those vehicles running. And certainly, we had a lot of other departments supporting them as well. Of course, they got to do it some more this weekend, but they did a beautiful job, and right now, the snow is gone. I also want to pass my compliments on to the organizers of the Martin Luther King Unity Day celebration yesterday. They changed their plans because of the weather and wound up having a virtual gathering, and they pulled that off, had a good attendance, and it was done beautifully with a fabli- fabulous, fabulous speech by Key Bryant McCormick. It was really inspiring, informational, and a great, it was a great, the whole program was very, very good. I think if you missed it, you're still available to see it by recording somewhere out there in social media land. Couple of things I want to mention to you event-wise. This Thursday, our Gallatin poet laureate, Kevin Chopson, is going to be doing a presentation at the Public Library. There's a reception at five thirty and a show at six P. M. I want to remind everyone, too, that every Friday night in January and February, there is a stay-warm shelter for the unhoused in our area. That happens from ten P. M. until six A. M. every Friday night, January and February, over at two sixty East Winchester. The Southern County Bridle Show is coming up on the twenty third of January, and there is a spirit night coming up at Phillies for the Friends of Gallatin Miracle Park. I think that's all this evening, so we'll move on now to the regular agenda. The first item on the agenda is second reading on amended ordinance O two one 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 dash seventy-two, and for that, Councilman Overton is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Oldham City, Gallatin, Southern County, Tennessee. Rezoning twenty-five point three two acre from planned business park district to mixed-use district, ten point three eight acres from planned business park district to planned general commercial district, and four point two eight acres from mixed-use district to planned general commercial district with a preliminary master development plan for Chandler Park Marketplace. Only total forty-six, forty-two point forty-six acres located north of Harris Lane, east of Greenlee Boulevard, and south of Vietnam Venice Boulevard on State Route three to six. Authorizing visions be indicated on official zoning analysts, repealing conflict ordinances, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date, and I so move.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Councilwoman George opening the floor for discussion. If I may, I have something that I would like to ask. While this council knows that I have been very concerned about apartments and absorption rate of people into our community, I don't want any misinformation spread, so I think it would be helpful for Mr. McCord to kind of give his own assessment of the traffic study information he gave you last week, and I'd also like Mr. Fenton to follow up with exactly what his position is regarding this development, because I do want us to be clear.
Councilwoman McCord, city planner. The information that I've distributed last week was simply the traffic counts that are conducted by TDOT on numerous roadways, both city streets and TDOT maintained roadways in the city. They are, indicate average annual daily trip volumes, and those are adjusted based on counts that you've seen, count stations set up around town frequently. They're usually these rubber tubes across the road that you cross over, and those are counting cars, and they have a formula that adjusts for those trips that they measure, usually in the middle of the week when there's not something unusual happening. And that is the basis from which they determine the carrying, the traffic volumes on any particular roadway. The level of service volumes, that level of service D are a, and I think I described this a little bit last time, is the carrying capacity of the road at that particular level of service. We don't have an adopted level of service in the city, and that is only the level of service measured at any particular one point. So it can be less further downstream or upstream from that point, or it may be more. So it is not the basis from which you would make a decision, as even indicated in one of the conditions of Exhibit B of this ordinance, that a traffic study will be provided at either one phase or subsequent phases as this project develops with each FMDP. So we'll get more detail as it relates to particularly peak hour traffic, because that's really the biggest concern. It's not so much daily traffic. It's that traffic during those peak hours in the morning and particularly the afternoon. So I want you to, hope that material that you got, if you have any questions about it, please call me. It can be easily misinterpreted, and maybe that's what happened here. We do have certain roadway segments, and I think you all are aware of those. They're reflected on there where there is congestion. Doesn't necessarily mean that the roadway is failing. A more detailed study would be needed to assure or validate whether or not there is a level of service failure, if we adopted a level of service. I just indicated on that chart that level of service D, this is a volume based on roadway characteristics. It's not an adopted level of service. Some places have level of service E. Some, like in downtown areas, will accept level of service F because they want people crowded in those areas. So normally, you have a higher or lower level of service, like an E or an F even, in more congested areas like downtowns, and lower level service in the periphery of the city. So just wanted to let you all know about that, and if you have any questions about that chart or any other traffic thing, you can talk with me and/or Nick. Nick might be able to, I don't know if he wants to supplement my talk there about that or not, but.
Council, do you all have any questions? Bill, I appreciate kind of the explanation there. Do you all have any questions for him, or do you want anything of Nick?
No, but I did have the question for James Fenton.
Mr. Fenton, do you mind? The reason I mentioned you is I think, you know, there were comments made back some time ago related to this development. I think it'd be good to remind this council what those are, and then Ms. Love says she has some questions for you.
Yes, yes. James Fenton, Economic Development. I think one of the concerns this body rightfully had was we had a previous hotel that stopped construction in the middle, and I think that was an anomaly truly. We had COVID that hit there, and there were some other things. This group is very well-financed, and I feel very, very comfortable they would move forward with it. I think we could look at the success that we had with the Wind Song development where we did this, we had a similar request that the developer of that start the Publix, the commercial, the same time they started the residential. And as you know, the Publix is up and running and open before that. Additionally, I think, I think there was a, maybe a request that they finished the hotel before certain other things can happen. Again, goes back to that somewhat of anomaly. I also think that in this particular case, the developer has the ability to do a Hilton or a Marriott flag, one of those brands, and oftentimes, those companies will partway through the construction, come up with a new design. They're going to have to order new exterior panels, things like that. So it might take that out of their, out of their complete control, but you can, I think, feel comfortable that they would move forward.
May I ask one more quick? I want you to go back to your original comments about your concern on the change of the plan, because I think that's like full information for anyone that may have tuned in late in this conversation.
And, you know, moving forward, creating revenue for the community is obviously what we're supposed to do here, and, and with that, the change that we're doing here, looking at doing here, does bring additional commercial online. It also creates enough density out there where a lot of the other parcels will be able to become productive for us as a community.
Love, thank you.
My question just went back to when this was brought before Planning Commission, and the position of economic development was not for it at that time because it was replacing the commercial with more residential, and I, is that?
And again, moving through this and looking at the ability for it to be developed as is, and with the, the change that we've asked for, and the front of it is commercial, it, it's not, there was a request originally for the whole thing to be done, MRO, where they could have come back possibly and asked for apartments up front. I think with the new zoning that we've asked for, the front being CS, that eliminates that possibility for us.
So your department is okay with everything?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have one for Mr. Fenton. Have you ever made the statement that we don't need any more housing in Gallatin?
No, sir. No.
Okay. I didn't think you had, but I just want to clarify that.
I got it.
Yes, sir.
One thing, do we, do we need, I know we made some changes on this last time we met about it, but do we need to?
Amend it now? I thought you were going to ask if we needed to amend.
What, what, what did the Planning Commission, what did they want to do on this as far as like, start the housing? And I know we put some stipulations on this last time, and do we need to continue that, or do we need to go back to like what the Planning Commission wanted to do? What's your thoughts?
I think it is appropriate to say they have to start the hotel at the same time they start the residential, and the developer is amenable to that.
Okay, but I think we put a, what did we do last?
Percentage of the hotel.
Right, I think we.
Percentage of the hotel had to be completed.
And, and I think that needs to be discussed here. Number eight on Exhibit B that I think you have in front of you states that no more than thirteen out of twenty-five residential buildings shall obtain a certificate of occupancy prior to the issuance of a CO for the hotel. And that's what I was talking about earlier. I think.
You think we need to scratch that and maybe go back?
Yes, sir, I do. I think that.
And go back to, say, what? What would you say?
Remove number eight and I, and insert there that it, that construction begin at the same time.
Okay, I'll make that as part of amendment to our, if.
Second.
That is part of amendment to this.
Just do we start the hotel first, or at the same time, start the hotel same time, and then move along at the same time?
Okay.
I'll second that.
Wait, are you keeping them divided into the, divided into the two groups of, what was it, twelve and?
We're scratching, we're scratching.
Number eight completely, right?
Completely.
Right.
I don't like that because.
That was my motion, though, so.
Oh, I know it is. I'm sorry. No, so we do have a motion and a second for that amendment, and my comment would be that I don't like that because it doesn't specify that some portion of the residential, I mean, they could start all the residential at the same point that they start that. And again, that puts me with the concern on many levels. But anyway, we have a motion and a second. Anyone wish to discuss it further? If you are in favor of the amendment, please say aye. Opposed, say no. We go back to the original motion as amended, continuing discussion there. No one? No further questions? Thank you, Mr. Fenton. Okay, we have second reading on amended ordinance O two, amended, amended ordinance, because we amended again this evening. So second reading on ordinance O two one 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 dash seventy-two as amended previously and as amended this evening. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is unanimously approved. Item number two is second reading on ordinance O two two oh one dash one. Vice Mayor Feneau, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance amending Gallatin Municipal Code, Chapter nine, Fire Protection and Prevention, Article six, fireworks. Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Mayor Feneau, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion from anyone?
Could you tell us what that was?
Any questions? Pardon me?
Explain that just a little bit to us, Paige.
Sorry, it's basically changing the fee schedules. And if you have any questions on that, Mr. Stewart's not here. Did you want to say anything?
Do you have any questions?
No, I just wanted to let the public know that's what that was about.
It's both the fees on the private displays, but also the big one is for the people who are selling, and the dates are changed slightly. And, you know, we have so many fireworks dealers here in our community that we felt like this made it, or, you know, when Mr. Stewart brought it to me, I agree with him that made sense, and you all are agreeing that it makes sense as well. So I think you two have them here, but we'll be getting more from them. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Second reading on ordinance O two two oh one dash one passes unanimously. Item three is second reading on ordinance O two two zero one dash two. Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is also appropriating funds received in the amount of five thousand two hundred forty-six dollars from insurance claim for damage to traffic. So I so move.
Second. Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion on this? This is second reading on ordinance O two two zero one dash two. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item four is second reading on amended ordinance O two two zero one dash three. Councilman Fann.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance amending Gallatin Municipal Code, Chapter five, Buildings and Buildings Regulations, Article three, Section five fifty-eight, Section five sixty-five, Article five one fifty-five, and establishing a new fee schedule. I so move.
Second. And again, there are several minor changes, mostly to note, though, is the fee change. I do have a motion by Councilman Fann, a second by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion or questions on this? Seeing no one wishing to speak, this is second reading on amended ordinance O two two zero one dash three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously. Item five is resolution R two two zero one dash one one. Councilwoman George.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution amending definition of military training leave. I so move.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman George, second by Councilwoman Love. And remember, this is regarding some, how, basically how some of our first responders' hours are accounted for related to military leave. This actually benefits them, so it's a good thing. This is resolution R two two zero one dash one one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. Item number six is resolution R two two zero one dash twelve. Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution amending voluntary benefits to include term-to-age-one-hundred life and twenty-four-hour accident. I so move.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Alexander. Any questions or discussion?
I got one, I got one statement. It's not a question, but I had a conversation with Mr. Maynard last, yesterday, and I'll tell you, this is a great, great, great benefit for our city employees.
Yeah, he's actually here if anybody has any questions.
Larry, will you come up and explain this one? I just think city employees need to understand what this term like, this term life stuff is, this insurance is, because not many places you can get it without having to do medical questions and everything else. And it's a great, no matter what the age is, it's a great opportunity for them to have life insurance.
That's great. My name is Larry Maynard. My office is located two oh eight North Locust Avenue, our ten sixteen Odom's Bend Private Court. This, there's a lot of unique factors in here, really too numerous to go into. One is, is for the initial offering with this policy, there is no prequalification for it, as you see in normal life insurance. So regardless of what their health or occupation might be, they automatically qualify. Another great benefit to it is it's completely portable, so that at retirement time, or if they leave their employment with the city, they're able to take it with them, which is totally unique. And seldom do you find one with a guaranteed rate to age one hundred. And with another insurance professional here, he'll tell you that's quite a unique thing, along with the, with the accident policy, which is a twenty-four-hour-a-day policy, so it's good occupational or non-occupational.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted.
Any questions?
I'll say one more thing real quick. Usually, recently had a person that left their employment with the city and moved out of the area, and, and after contacting them after employment, we found out that they were uninsurable completely, right, them and their spouses. So this is available to employees, spouses, and families, so.
Great benefits.
They would have been able to take that with them.
I just wanted you to explain those, because they're great benefits. Thank you, Mr. Maynard.
It's an optional benefit, too. There's no cost to the city. This is an employee-paid program, but there are some things that are very appealing about that. So anything further on that?
Just a question. If, does this automatically apply to the people who have the life insurance, or do they have to?
No, no, no. It's an optional, optional.
So this is a new option they have to do.
Right, and they have to purchase it themselves, but the benefits are, as he explained. Sounds great.
It's a hundred percent employee-paid, right? There, there is no cost to the city, so they can pick out what level of benefit that they want. In a group your size, they can get up to a hundred thousand dollars for an employee, up to thirty thousand dollars for an employed spouse, not employed with the city, but employed someplace else, and a benefit for children as well. And it covers the whole group of children, up to ten thousand dollars per stripe. So, so that's a part of, does that answer your question?
Thank you. Thank you. Gallatin, this is resolution R two two zero one dash twelve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously, and that concludes the regular agenda. It brings us down to other business, so I would ask if there's any member of this council that has other business to bring forward this evening.
I have one.
All right.
I just wanted to know if Mr. Brown could give us an update on Clearview Park?
David Brown, Director of Parks and Recreation. Unfortunately, some of you may not have heard, we applied for a Blue Cross Blue Shield grant for Clearview Park that included a building and playgrounds and shelters and stuff. Unfortunately, we did not get awards at that grant this year, but we found out that they want us to apply again next year, and we had to go, they thought it was a strong grant. It was just a few other places that they was trying to spread their funds out.
Geographically.
So right now, the mayor and I are going to meet, hopefully next week.
We have met.
I'm sorry?
We have met.
Well, we have met, but I'm talking about getting down to the nitty-gritty of what's the next step. Is to wait and apply again, or go on and do some of the features? the next step, is to wait and apply again, or go on and do some of the features that we had applied for.
My opinion, what I communicated, was that we move forward, at least with the building piece of it, and plan to apply again, obviously. But depending on the timeline and the cost, they may actually wind up lining right up again together. But regardless, I think it is a priority to go ahead and get to work on that building. And so what we need at this point is to figure out a plan that we're good with and the numbers associated with it, so.
We do have some funding now for the... To renovate the playground, but it might be more feasible to wait and use that along with the grant if we apply and fall again. So that was a decision the mayor and I was going to probably bring back to y'all once we got more detailed into it.
Do we ever come up with a dimension, David?
I'm sorry?
Do you ever come up with a dimension size for the building? If we were to erect a building over the Clearview?
I think what we applied in the grant was a 60 by 80.
It's based on what you had...
I thought it was a bigger building.
It was either 80 by 80 or 60 by 80. I think the grant was a little larger than what we had originally talked, because, you know, it was going to be 100% funded, so.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
You're welcome.
Mayor, can I ask you something?
Sure.
I know that... Check on our police department, our facility, our training facility, and we did mention about getting somebody in-house to be a project manager. Was we ever successful in that, or we met on that, or discussed it?
We have not met on that. I've talked to the chief about it, but no, I don't think there's been a determination made. I don't know where we might get to with that.
I just think we need to move forward on it.
I spoke to the person we discussed, and there's willingness there, but we need to make sure it would work, and the expertise is there, and the time is there, so.
I'll talk to the chief about it and see if we can push that along. Thank you.
One else with other business? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on along now to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. Remind you, this is the time of the meeting. You can come forward and talk about anything that's not on the agenda. So right now, I'd say public recognition on non-agenda-related items is now open. Okay, I see no one indicating they wish to speak, so we'll declare public recognition on non-agenda-related items closed, and we're at that point. Anything? Motion to adjourn by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Everyone have a lovely evening. Be kind, and we will look forward to seeing you again soon. Bye.